Good morning, and I apologize, we ran late in another meeting. Welcome to the Thursday, August 28th, as Commissioner Vigliotti just pointed out, the last meeting in August, for the open session of Board of Carroll County Commissioners. And as we prefer to do, we'll start with pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Garen, since you didn't get to do this last week, can we start with you?
Yeah, I think that's fair. Good morning, Carroll County. Just a couple of quick notes. As some of you are aware, I sit on the Emergency Service Advisory Council, which is a group that meets once a month, and we all come together from the volunteer, career, county side, and spend a couple hours dealing with some of the issues there, talking about some of the regulations, some of the things going on. You know, nobody ever said that creating a hybrid, if you will, there's probably a better term, a hybrid fire and EMS system in the county was going to be easy, but failure is not an option. So I just wanted to mention that my appreciation for everybody that's part of ESAC, all the volunteers, all the careerists, as we come together and try to work together to create the best policies and the best, what's best for the system moving forward. There's always going to be differences of opinion, there's always going to be better ways to do things, but I just very much appreciate being able to sit there and watch that process work itself out. And like I said, it is my opinion, personal opinion, that it is working, but nobody ever said it was going to be easy. So, and we've been extremely successful, to the point where we are fielding questions and comments from other parts of the country right now, as to how did Carroll County pull this off? You know, why is it working as well as it is? So that's a testament to how well it's going. And on that note, I wanted to mention, I have a save the date for everybody here in Carroll County. But the countywide Fall Junior Firefighter Day is currently scheduled for September 27th, that's a Saturday, at the Public Safety Training Center in Westminster. There's some more details to follow, but I just want to give you that save the date. It would be pretty much all day long, around 7:30 to 2 o'clock. This is a incredibly, this is a great function, getting young people involved in firefighting and EMS, high schoolers, younger individuals involved, and they can see now that there's paths forward in Carroll County. If you want to do that in Carroll County, you can stay in Carroll County and support your county doing that. But September 27th, I just wanted to mention that as a save the date, and I will give more information as it becomes available. And that's all for me, thanks.
Good morning, Carroll County. I'm just going to mention a few things from the past week or so that's been going on in the community. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau's Crab Cakes for a Cause event, which was held at Rock Salt. It was a very well-attended event. Also at the event was Ryan Ripken with his podcast. It was great to meet Ryan Ripken and be a part of getting to interact with him. That's a photo of me with the new executive director for CCYSB. So it was a pleasure to meet her. I know she's going to be coming in in early September to meet formally with all of us, but it was a pleasure to take some time and support them and all they do in the community for both youth and families, and also, of course, very importantly, mental health. So it was great to be a part of that. And then this past weekend, I was part of the, got to attend the back-to-school drive held by Find Your Purpose at Westminster City Park. As always, an exceptional event. Probably easily 125-plus kids are getting school supplies and backpacks, which is huge. Thanks to everybody that supported that. As I always try to do, I try to support where I can, so did support that with about 10 backpacks myself personally. But a lot of nonprofits were there, a lot of community members, just a great situation, great opportunity for everybody to come out. And you know, whether it's, whether it's, you know, Find Your Purpose, Boys and Girls Club, Shepherd Staff, I mean, the thing is, we talk about it around Christmas and the holidays, helping people, but it's something we need to do 24/7. So, and especially with back-to-school, it's tough, you know, families definitely can use that extra help, so if you have the opportunity, please, please assist any way you can. But again, that was a great event, wonderful food, was donated by Collision Course Downtown Westminster Restaurant, and just a great event for the community as a whole. Also wanted to mention real briefly, the Carroll County Public Library just recently was given a grant by the Callard Foundation. Obviously, I think that's exceptional, and as we all know, the Callard Foundation and Greg Callard do so much, not only in our community, but also in other parts of the country. And it's just incredible that we have that kind of a synergy and interaction with not only people in our community, but our nonprofits and everybody. So just truly impressive to see that happening, and truly appreciative of all that the Callard Foundation does in our community. Also wanted to mention very briefly, as I think many people probably know, Chief Ledwell from Westminster Police Department is going to be retiring within the next several days, but wanted to give him a shout-out for all he's done. Was hugely involved in some of the model for community policing in Westminster, and collaboration with public safety for a number of years now. So wish him all the best as he retires, and look forward to working with our new Westminster Police Chief in the future. And that is all for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. Two things for me today. So first of all, I had the absolute privilege to attend the opening of the Maryland State Firefighters Association Executive Committee Meeting this past Saturday. The meeting brings together volunteers from across the state a couple of times a year in different locations to discuss critical business, and this time Carroll County in particular Pleasant Valley Fire Company was host to the meeting. I was honored to be able to get to say a few words of welcome on behalf of myself and my friends up here, to see friends in familiar faces and to make new friends that morning. I also want to commend everybody at Pleasant Valley for being such phenomenal hosts, and I know that all of us up here share admiration, respect, and immense gratitude for the incredible work that all of our volunteer companies do. And second of all, with everything that's continuing to go on with PSEG and the power lines, the forest property surveys, the courts, I wanted to take a moment to litonize some of the steps that we, as a board, have taken in our efforts against those power lines, just as a reminder. So by resolution, sponsored by Commissioner Gordon, we formalized and established our official county position against the power lines. We pursued the coordination process with the federal government. We've denied PSEG's request to access county property. We've prefiled letters of opposition with the Maryland Public Service Commission or the PSC. We filed testimony in support of the March 2027 procedural schedule proposed by the PSC. We filed letters of opposition with the Pennsylvania segment of the power lines with the Pennsylvania Utility Commission. We've coordinated with Frederick and Baltimore County in efforts against the power lines. We've coordinated with our state delegation, and we've offered written testimony in support of innumerable legislative efforts in Annapolis to stop MPRP. We've coordinated with our congressional representation against MPRP. We voted to set aside at least $100,000 to deal with opposition expenditures. We've engaged outside legal counsel, we've supported and worked with citizens groups, including Stop MPRP Incorporated. We've attended their meetings and events. We've hosted our own town hall listening session against the MPRP when PSEG did not have the courage to do that. We maintain and keep current a page of our county website specifically about the MPRP to share documents and information. We are working on a number of specific things at present with details to come. And finally, this board is constantly in communication with each other, with our staff and others regarding the power lines, and we are all constantly learning, researching, studying, and considering the paths that we have forward. And that just scratches the surface of what we've done, but I thought that it was important where we are now to make mention of what we've done. And Commissioner, that's all for me this morning, thank you.
Thank you. A few things, one for all the employees, all the Commissioner employees. This is the last summer Friday, and a couple, a lot of people have said thank you for it. I think it's an inexpensive way to increase production, and I think the employees appreciate it very much. A few appreciated so much, I said, sorry, this week's your last Friday. They said, well, you guys could extend it. I said, it's summer Fridays, and it's over. And so, and I appreciate the thoughts.
Commissioner Vigliotti yesterday talked to Christie just teasingly about us, fall Fridays, that has a nice ring to it.
Yeah, yeah.
That and Apple Watches.
Yeah, yeah, Apple Watches, I tell you. It's interesting, and I stopped wearing a watch in 2004 for reasons everybody doesn't want to hear, but it's interesting, I think, a story. Steve Guthrie, Superintendent Carroll County Public Schools, he was tired of carrying around this and looking at it if it beeped during a meeting, so he got an Apple Watch. So all he had to do was this when it ever beeped. Citizens complained, are you so bored at your meeting you keep checking the time? So it didn't always work out for him, but a lot of people have them, and we pick on a lot of people. I've met in the past few weeks with some jurisdictions on some fire halls, and I just want to mention, a couple of fire halls at events will say, we really want, we really want to meet you. And I'll say, email me, we'll schedule something, blah, 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 and then I never hear. Any jurisdiction, any fire hall that wants to meet any individual, please, please contact the council to see their new tech lab. And awesome event, awesome group, they've been around for eight years maybe, and now opened this lab. And they're proud of their lab, they're even very proud of the couch. They're good, hard-working people. But of note, there were so many people from the state, from Johnny O, from whatever, there, and so it was nice to meet the tech council people, but so many other people were there, and we had great conversations. And I apologize, a couple of you haven't emailed back yet, but I will. We had cabinet meeting this week, and they're always great to get all the directors together and have good conversation. And again, we've got some great people in the building. Last night, I went on a virtual meeting for the Finksburg Bicycle Pedestrian and Feasibility Study. Some of our planning staff was on it, and there was a consultant who ran the meeting. And it's great, the Finksburg area needs some bike trails. I'm not sure they need it down 140 and 91, but, and there's a plan in the future to maybe cross 140 at D.D. Road, which would be a challenge, but, and they say in their thing, we, certain intersections, we don't know that we've gotten enough requests. Now, what a couple people said, I love, I love riding my bike for recreation. I know some foolish people that do ride their bike to work, so some people do transportation, I won't name her, but it's, I think we need more recreation, and like I said, it'd be nice if you could bike from Sandy Mount Park to Rory Run, Rory Roaring Run Lions Club Park, and you can't because that road's so cut up. So there's some good things about it. They have something on a website. They have something on a website. If you're interested in commenting on it, please do. And while the study area is Finksburg proper, a comment did came up, did come up for Deer Park Road and people that don't feel safe riding a bike on Deer Park Road for the traffic and the speed. And it's a tough situation. And I mentioned, as a kid, we rode every place. You know, we took our bike down, down 30, 42. 42 at that time was concrete with about a three or four-inch drop-off on the edge to the dirt. So if a car came, you could wreck, but nobody seemed to care. And we need to get back to where people can recreate on their bikes and pedestrian paths. And I'll mention one thing for all of us. We did not design and/or pay for the boardwalk past 84 lumber. Everybody, every time somebody wants money, they're going, "You should take the money away from that and do it." Well, that's a state project. That's not ours. I went to lunch about nothing in Westminster, happens once a month, and it's a great group. It tends to be a very artistic group, and I tell them, "I can't, I can't even do color by number because I can't stand the lines," but some of those people are so talented, and it's a great lunch. And they, I think it's on Facebook. And then lastly, and they put up the thing. Jimmy Zumbrum was killed in Vietnam. He's about seven or eight years older than I am, but I remember it. And on Saturday, October 4th, at 10:00 a.m. at 3,000 Manchester Road, we're going to uncover that sign that's shown, and then uncover several other signs, and do a dedication of Route 27 and Maryland 30 to him. The state highways lined that up. The sheriff through Brandon Holland has volunteered to control traffic for us, and the state said that that's great. And we've got a business there, the Manchester Professional Center. Rhonda and I went to visit them and told them what was going on, and he goes, "Well, just come in and park on the grass, and that way you don't have to have a vehicle out on the road." And it's just such great people in Carroll County. I said, "Well, this is the date." He goes, "I don't need the date." I said, "Well, you want us to call you a week before?" He goes, "Just come in and park on the grass and do it," you know. It's, we got great people in Carroll County, and I appreciate it. The Zumbrum family grew up in Manchester, went to North Carroll. Now, majority of them are in Sykesville, and I will mention overdose awareness. We're going to talk about in a minute, sorry. Jeff Zumbrum named his son Jimmy after his brother, and his son Jimmy had a fatal OD. So it's a tough situation. But the family's now mostly in Sykesville. They have half a house. They do a lot for the community. But we're going to get to honor Jimmy Zumbrum, who has, and I forget, a Silver Star, Bronze Star, a Purple Heart. And he, I think he volunteered for three, three different terms in Vietnam. But, so a great family, a great guy, and I just want to let everybody know what we're doing. And that finishes me with way too much. I can't believe I said more than you.
That's pretty impressive.
Oh, man. And so now you're going to talk about Overdose Day, so you get to talk more.
I was saving up. Well, good morning, everybody. Anybody who wants to come down to the front for this, please do feel free to do so.
We have a whole group that we'd love to have surround us, if that's okay.
Sure.
Absolutely. And after we all talk, we want to do a photo, and occasionally some are shy and say, "I don't want to be in it." That's not an option if you're in the picture.
We all hear that. It's not an option.
So I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and then turn things over to you, and then we'll do the picture. So proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day, or IOAD, is observed annually on August 31st, is the world's largest campaign aimed at ending overdose, remembering those who have lost, acknowledging the grief of their loved ones, and renewing our commitment to combating overdose and its related harms. And whereas the overdose crisis not only devastates families but also entire communities, this underscores the importance of collective action, connection, and hope in addressing this public health crisis. The theme for 2025, "One Big Family Driven by Hope," emphasizes community healing and support. And whereas IOAD offers an opportunity to honor those we have lost while promoting effective prevention strategies, addressing overdose requires a community-wide effort that includes prevention measures, alternatives to criminalization, supportive policies, and improved access to health care. It is important to recognize that substance use disorder is treatable, and stigma can be a significant barrier to seeking help. And now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2025 as International Overdose Awareness Day, and we call upon everyone to raise awareness, combat stigma, promote treatment, celebrate recovery, strengthen efforts to prevent overdose deaths, and participate in IOAD events that will align with the spirit of the day and its theme. Adopted this 28th day of August 2025, signed all four of us commissioners. All yours.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. We really appreciate it. My name's Amy Baker, and I work at the Carroll County Health Department, the Behavioral Health Bureau, as the Program Director for Special Populations. And under that, we have peer support, harm reduction, outreach, and case management, and we do a lot daily with all the people you see here to combat overdoses in our community. I have something I want to say, but I want to turn it over to my colleagues first and give them a chance to speak because you have people here who have lived experiences, and they are much more poignant than I, so. Lauren, do you want to?
I, sure. Hi, everybody. All right, so I wrote something down, so hopefully I'm not too long-winded. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Lilly. I've been proud to call Carroll County my home for the past seven years. I'm a dog mom, a student pursuing my master's in social work with a focus on policy and advocacy, and someone who believes in living life fully. From skydiving to visiting 46 states and countless national parks to earning hours as a student pilot. An accomplishment I'm very proud of is celebrating one year working at the Carroll County Health Department as a certified peer recovery specialist. In that role, I've learned more than I've ever expected, not just about public health, but about people, and about the courage it takes to seek help in the face of stigma. And I want to be honest with you. It isn't always easy to stand here and say that I'm a person in recovery. I'm also an educated woman and a licensed substance use counselor in the evenings, also in Carroll County. I am someone who wants more than anything to be taken seriously in professional spaces, but the truth is, the passion I have for this work comes directly from my lived experience, and that combination, education, and experience gives me an important perspective and important things to say. Last year, I spoke about my lived experience, and this year I have a deeper understanding of what it means to use my voice. One of the most powerful lessons I've taken away this year comes from a book that was suggested to me. It reminded me that when stigma surrounds an illness, it becomes harder to treat than the disease itself. We see this in our community with addiction and mental health. Shame keeps people from reaching out. Families stay silent. And not-in-my-backyard thinking can unintentionally keep our neighbors from the services that could save their lives. Harm reduction is the heart of recovery. It's simply compassion put into action. It's making sure people have the chance to stay alive long enough to find recovery. It's a bridge, not a barrier. We see it work in a neighboring county where overdose numbers are significantly lower. What makes this more painful is knowing that overdoses aren't countered when our residents overdose or die outside county lines, meaning the true impact here is larger than the numbers show. Just this past weekend, we lost a member of our recovery community. He carried the message of hope. Commissioners, I don't sit here today trying to accuse or divide. I stand here to invite. On September 6th, at Westminster City Park, our peers are hosting an event to celebrate recovery and to remember those we've lost. I would love to see you there, not just as leaders, but as neighbors. Spend time with us. Ask us questions. Learn what we believe and how we help the members of our community that are experiencing the hardest parts of their lives. Most of us will be in purple shirts, learn what recovery looks like, and what it takes to fight for it every day. It's more than, that can be summed up in this, in this opportunity. Because every day, we, the peers, hold out our hands to those who are struggling, hoping they'll grab on. But sometimes, when we reach our other hand, back towards the systems that are meant to support us, we feel only a weak grip, and in that space, lives are lost. My hope today is simple, that together we can strengthen that grip, that all of Carroll, that all of Carroll County learns that stigma can give way to compassion, and that Carroll County can be known as a community where no one is lost or left behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak?
I will say a little bit. I'm Jermaine Thornton. I also work at the Carroll County Health Department. I work in the peer support part of our bureau. I'm the supervisor. But I'm also a county resident, lifelong county resident of Carroll County, Westminster, and I'm a person in long-term recovery. And today I came, you know, because overdose awareness is big to me. It means a lot. I have lost my older brother to an overdose in this county. I've lost a few family members and countless friends. So when I got into recovery and got into this field, that was my mission, you know, to do my part and do what I could to stop overdoses from happening. You know, for me, I always say, growing up in this county, growing up in Westminster, a lot of people see me at my worst, and then they get to see me at my best. And hopefully, that will give them some hope, where they don't have to go down the same road and take, you know, the steps necessary to be in recovery, to live a purposeful life, and feel good about what they're doing with their life. You know, we all have struggles still in recovery, but we're able to manage them and lean on each other for those troubles. But today is all about overdose awareness, and you know, for us at the Health Department, we do all that we can to not stop overdoses. That's ultimately the goal, but you know, educate people as well. You know, stigma is a big thing. You know, we don't want to look at overdoses and, you know, feel like those people are family members. They're not husbands. They're not sons. They're, you know, those things. You know, we have to remember the family as well, you know, and connect with them and support them and give them the resources they need. But I thank you, Commissioners, and I thank Carroll County for supporting us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jermaine. Would anybody behind me like to say anything? You don't have to, but... I do want to acknowledge Commissioners, and again, thank you for proclaiming today International Overdose Awareness Day. Everybody here works every day really hard to help people struggling with overdose, to get them to another day, right? So that might be the day where they're ready for some treatment, or they're ready to walk the path of recovery, or they're ready to take the first step. I'll just say overdose awareness is vital in addressing the ongoing crisis of substance use and saving lives. It means recognizing the humanity of people, I think Jermaine and Lauren said that very succinctly, who use drugs and working alongside them with compassion, respect, and practical support to reduce harm and keep them alive. By creating safe, non-judgmental spaces, we empower individuals to move toward healthier lifestyles when they're ready. Rather than imposing unrealistic expectations, it's also a time to honor and remember those we've lost to the disease of addiction. Too many lives have been lost, and their lives matter deeply. Reducing the shame and stigma surrounding substance use is essential, not only for encouraging people to seek help, but also for fostering a society that responds to addiction with empathy, not punishment. I would like to thank you again for proclaiming today, as it helps raise awareness and let people know that they are not alone. The Health Department's Prevention, Harm Reduction, Diversion, and Peer Support staff are standing at the ready to help anyone struggling with addiction to serve as a support, a guide, an advocate, and linkage to services. Access to these supports are as easy as a phone call to the Health Department. We're here. We're ready when anyone's ready for that first step. And to quote Commissioner Garan, "Failure's not an option." So I want to thank you all for this proclamation. It's important to get the word out every single day that there's no shame in walking through addiction. The only thing we ask is that you ask for the help. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you for having the courage to share your stories. You're proof that hope is made real. You show that there is a possibility of a better tomorrow, and thank you for sharing that because I can't imagine how many people think that there is no tomorrow, but you've definitely demonstrated that there is a way, there's a reality, there's a way forward. Thank you for that. Thank you very much for that.
And, yeah, you, the people here and the people you represented aren't here. You're just awesome. You changed lives. You shaped behavior. You made a great point. Local people have seen you at the worst, and they've seen you at the best. We currently have, well, we had two in recovery houses. The one's now more of a treatment center because he decided, after many, many years, that it was better to go buy coke than stay in the recovery house and be free. I don't know how you affect that behavior, but it's awesome when you do, and I know nobody bats a thousand on it. But it's, you know, we've seen an OD. We've seen a suicide that was drug-related. And anybody that says they're not touched by it and don't need this, they're in denial. And so thank you so much for all you do, and thank you for, I like that comment. I'll probably quote you without giving you recognition several times.
That's all right.
Jermaine Thornton, peer supervisor.
I greatly appreciate you all coming in today, and obviously, we know that not everyone is here that is involved in this. It's just a tremendous job that you all do. Appreciate you sharing your stories. But more importantly, I think it's very appreciated, appreciated that you all share those stories with other people and give them hope and faith that it is possible. I appreciate you mentioning, even though I really wish it wouldn't have happened, what happened this past week. I personally know about that in some ways. I'm not going to get into that this morning, but I do appreciate you at least recognizing that individual. And it does, it affects everybody in our community. There's nobody that's not touched by this, whether it's your family member, it's a friend of a family member. And it's just something that we have to battle each day together, and it's one of the things that I'd like to think we do well as a community, whether it's looking out for kids that need backpacks or fighting this, is we work together, and I commend you all for that. And you know, obviously, if there's anything any of us can do, we are more than happy to do so. And thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Yeah, well said by my colleagues. Can't really add to that. I just very appreciative of what you do. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and we look forward to, you know, moving the needle forward in the community with the resources that we can provide, and continuing every day to do the work. These, I cannot give enough credit to the people in this audience who do this work every day out in the community. One person at a time, non-judgmental, safe spaces, and allow people to get up, succeed, fall backwards, and help them get up again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture?
Well, before picture, we have a public, a request for public comment on this subject. So we don't normally do that, but it's way more relevant while you are here.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you.
If it's better to waste the air, but I can just be...
No, no, go ahead. Do the mic. We don't, we don't want to see you for two hours. And introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Rick Glass, Hampstead, Maryland. Many of you already know who I am. For those that don't, I am an alcoholic combat veteran who has been diagnosed with PTSD from two combat tours in Iraq in the early 2000s. I was arrested here in Westminster 4/19/2017 and checked myself into a VA rehab the following day. My alcohol-free date is 4/20/2017, and I'm happy to say I have not consumed a single alcoholic drink in over eight years, and just as important to me is not taking a single prescription medication in over seven. There are many things that have assisted me in my recovery, but believe passionately that cannabis saved my life. I was not a consumer growing up and didn't find this plant until my mid-30s. I want to thank all the Commissioners for addressing the hard task they have at hand, especially when discussing the opioid epidemic. Being that there was a proclamation for overdose awareness today, I am going to again bring up cannabis. I fully support the education and distribution of Narcan, and I think that the numbers show that it is saving lives. that it is saving lives. I would like to shift the conversation from saving lives to increasing quality of life. Often, we forget how people became addicted to opioids in the first place. Many were given a prescription by their doctor to address some level of pain in the, that the patient was in. If only there was a substance available that had virtually zero risk of overdose and can often hit the same pain receptors opioids do. Oh wait, there is. If as a community, we are concerned about saving as many lives as we can, then cannabis education absolutely deserves a seat at the table. Working in the cannabis industry for the past seven years, it's hard for me to ignore my own eyes, combined with statistics. I have seen so many people use this plant responsibly, and have seen it assist people in recovery. I am also very aware that cannabis isn't for everyone, but again, I will lean heavier on statistics as compared to an individual's personal experience. I am not an anomaly, nor am I original in getting relief from the cannabis plant. There are many in our community that are. One of the local dispensaries is seeing over 10,000 people a month. That number right there shows how many are benefiting. While it is benefiting a lot of different types of people, I can say that according to the stats, and through my daily interactions, that our veteran community is specifically benefiting immensely. While I think there are many ways to serve your country, I know two of our Commissioners are veterans. I would think they would support our veterans who are finding holistic ways to health and wellness. This is the first year in United States history that daily cannabis consumers are at a higher percentage than daily alcohol consumers. I applaud this, but I think it's time to stop ignoring, demonizing, and blaspheming an extremely beneficial plant. Are there concerns to discuss? Sure. Is this plant helping many in this community for many different issues, and allowing people to reduce prescription medication? It is. Cana Cares, which is my cannabis consulting company, is now an official 501(c)(3) nonprofit through the Community Foundation as of Tuesday, and I would love to help. Thank you.
Thank you. We ready for the photo?
I think we are. Thank you.
Come on, we'll stand up here if that makes it better for the crowd.
You guys are holding it.
Yes. Look in the back.
Oh, yeah.
Just a little bit. See it this way.
No.
No.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Can you see me behind this big guy?
I'm trying not to, but there you are.
Trying.
Sneak in the photo. Uh huh.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again, Commissioner. Thank you. We'll be back next week.
I've seen you.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, yeah. We'll be back two more months.
Maybe I see it island green, I don't know.
Thank you.
Oh, come on.
Don't tell the Commissioner. Thank you again.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, now Commissioner Garen's going to talk about Preparedness Month.
That's right. September is Carroll County Preparedness Month. I see the Director of Public Safety, Valerie Hawkins, she's brought a couple of her troops with her, so if you want to head on up to the front. All right, well, welcome, everybody. As just was previously mentioned, Carroll County is Preparedness, September is Carroll County Preparedness Month. Come on, we've got somewhere, we've got somewhere around. So emergency preparedness is the shared responsibility of the entire nation, every jurisdiction, every community, every business, every family, and every individual, in having a role in planning and preparing for emergencies and disasters of all kind. And Carroll County Preparedness Month, in coordination with the National Preparedness Month, provides an opportunity to highlight the important role of individuals as they prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, schools, and communities. This nationwide observance encourages all Americans to learn more about ways to prepare for all types of emergencies. And the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the Carroll County Department of Public Safety urge all Carroll County residents and business owners to take time during September to create an emergency supply kit, to make a family or business emergency plan, to remain informed about different threats and the appropriate responses to each, and to get involved in preparing their community for emergencies. And the Board of Carroll County Commissioners of Carroll County recognizes the importance of preparing for potential emergencies and is proud to observe September 2025 with appropriate preparedness activities. Therefore, we the Board of Carroll County Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Carroll Preparedness Month. And again, thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Want to welcome everybody up here to the, to the front with me. These are the other members of the emergency management staff. Jacob Hill, you have met a number of times before, he's the Assistant Emergency Manager. I'm trying to speak into the microphone. We also have Brian Kernan, who's over on the right, raise your hand. He is our Fiscal and Outreach Person. He works very hard to get the word out to all of our citizens and visitors about the need for preparedness. Wyatt Peters is next to him, he is our Emergency Management Planner. And Grant Yost is over here on the right, or I guess your left, my right, as I'm looking backwards. He is our Readiness Technician. So we wanted to bring everybody today. They are all very integral to what emergency management does, and especially with regard to preparedness. So thank you again for proclaiming this month as Preparedness Month. National Preparedness Month was started in 2004. It's been around for 21 years now, and the whole idea was just to encourage people to prepare for emergencies. Very shortly after September 11th, it's not unlinked, I don't believe. So this year, every year, there's a theme, right, for Preparedness Month, and this year the theme is Preparedness Starts at Home. It's really kind of a back-to-basics thought process for preparedness. And as you mentioned in the proclamation, Commissioner Garen, it's really rather simple when you think about it. First thing you need to do is know what your risks are. Everybody's level of risk and the types of hazards that they're going to be subject to risk from are going to be different, right? If you live in a flood-plone area, flood-prone area, your risk from flood is higher. If you live someplace where it snows a lot, your risk from blizzards is going to be higher. You just need to know your own area. And then, once you know that those risks, figure out what your plan is going to be with your family, or a business plan. Think a little bit about what you're going to do in advance, and it saves you a lot of time and effort and energy when you do need to respond. Build a kit. Make sure you have enough water, food, medicine for your family, including your pets, and make sure that you're thinking about all of the people in your family that might have, you know, some specific needs, right? If you have somebody who relies on electricity for medical equipment, make sure you have a plan in place to have battery backup or some other method to help keep those, those folks safe as well. Make sure you have a radio. Everybody relies on their cell phones a lot for emergency communications and notifications about weather hazards and things. But sometimes the self, the cell phones aren't working as well as we want to if we're in an area of poor coverage, or there's just a network issue. So regular radio, battery-powered, or especially NOAA Weather Radio, they are really important things to have in your supply kit. They're not horribly expensive, you can get them pretty inexpensively, but they are something you can rely on even when the cell network might be down or congested. And then flashlight, batteries, all sorts of things that are out there. You can do a Google search for emergency supplies kit and get millions of returns on it. Just take some time, look at it ahead of time, and figure out what's best for your particular family situation. And then, get involved. That was the last thing, Commissioner Garen, I believe, that's on that list. And there are a lot of ways that you can do that. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jacob to talk about Ready Carroll that we have coming up next month.
Yeah, so because of, September is Preparedness Month, our office is putting together next month, September, a month-long program where residents can come and learn how to be prepared. It's Thursday, each Thursday of next month from 6:00 to 8:00. And really, each week is a theme. So the first week is general preparedness, how to really be prepared at home, because it does start at home. The second week is, we'll have our partners in Fire and EMS come and talk about fire prevention. The third week is our folks from Sheriff's Office will come and talk about crime prevention. And then the last week is, is community organizations. I think we'll have Red Cross there and talk about, you know, what they do and how to get involved in the community. So we're really excited about that. If you are interested in signing up, I think we have registration through our social media, and I believe on the website as well.
I believe so. But it's definitely up on our Facebook page.
Yes. So if you're interested, please sign up. We're, we're excited to have it again. We did one earlier this year, and we're putting together next year, next month, so we're excited.
Thank you for all you do, and you gave us some good suggestions today, and hopefully the people that are listening, so thank you very much.
Certainly.
Well, thank you very much all for what you do, and, you know, I mean, prevention is a huge part of dealing with an emergency, not preparedness, not being prepared to prevent an emergency before it happens. Just to be clear about where I was going with that. But, you know, it's funny, you mentioned the, the radio, you know, back when we had those bad storms about 10 years ago, the winter storm, actually, it was more like 15 years ago, I think, at this point. I made sure to get one of those NOAA Hand Crank radios, because, I mean, you can't always rely on solar power for radio, and those, they're not expensive, 30, 40 bucks, and, you know, it's a peace-of-mind kind of thing. Not even just that, but first aid kits as well, and, I mean, let me ask you, is there a specific first aid kit, like a standard first aid kit, that everybody should have?
That's going to, that's going to depend on your particular situation. You can do a Google search and figure out exactly what should, should be in a standard first aid kit. But I hesitate to, you know, provide a, you know, like a list or anything like that, simply because it is going to be different for everybody, but the basics, you know, are the same. But as I mentioned, if you go out and, on the internet and do a search for emergency preparedness or first aid kits, there's a lot of information out there for anybody who takes a little bit of time to go out and look for it. And, you know, to your point about cost, you know, we recognize that sometimes it's difficult for folks to put aside a little bit of money to develop an emergency supplies kit, right? But if you do it a little bit at a time, you know, one week, buy one item, or buy something when it's buy one, get one free, if you're talking about food or something like that. It, it can be done a little bit less, a little bit of a, less of a hit on the budget. So we recognize that sometimes it's a little more, little bit more difficult for folks to do, but there are ways to do it.
Makes perfect sense. And the meetings again are next month, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and where are they happening? Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00?
They're at the Public Trading, Public Safety Trading Center.
Thank you very much.
Yes, truly, as we've already said from a couple of my colleagues, just absolutely impressive what you all do in preparedness, and I don't think the average person has any real understanding of what goes into that. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's not. You all get to do the things that we don't know about, and make sure everybody sleeps well, and I know that that's a lot on you, and I truly appreciate you taking that on. I mean, that's why the average person gets to have a calm evening and doesn't know what goes bump in the night. But truly, truly appreciate all the hard work and dedication from all of you.
We, we like it when people take us for granted, although we don't want them to completely take us for granted.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Yeah. Yeah, well said, well said. Well, thanks again, and can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Can we go down, or too many?
Valerie, you should probably be in the middle regardless, right?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, guys. Thanks for joining us.
Just had our birthday.
They're doing a lot more cool things than they did when I was in.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, our next item is a public hearing. I'd like to call it to order for consideration of the Department of Housing and Urban Development five-year plan for fiscal year '25 through '29, and an annual plan for this year.
Good morning, Commissioners. This, this one is going to be painfully familiar to you, as it's been kicking around for several months.
Yes.
This is, as Commissioner Kyler said, a public hearing, the purpose of which is to solicit public comment on this proposed adoption of a Department of Housing and Urban Development five-year plan for '25 to '29, and an annual plan for FY 2025 for the Carroll County Bureau of Housing. This has been put out for public comment on the website for 45 days in accordance with federal law, and we also advertised today's hearing in the Carroll County Times on July 8th and July 15th of this year. With us this morning are Danielle Yates, our Division Manager from Housing and Community Development Connection, and Paul Moffett, who I remembered his name this time, from the Bureau of Housing. They're here to answer any questions you may have, and to give you maybe a short summary of what, what we're up to today before the public weighs in.
Sure. So, good morning, Commissioners. As Mr. Burke had presented, we are here as required by HUD to get public comment regarding our fiscal year 2025 annual plan, as well as our five-year plan, which runs from fiscal year 2025 to 2029. On July 3rd, we came to and received approval to post the required 45-day public notice as instructed by our HUD Regional Office, who requested that we repost the fiscal year 2025 annual plan and the five-year plan for review and public comment. As noted, we have posted this through the Carroll County Times both on July 8th and July 15th. Additionally, we reached back out to our Resident Advisory Committee, which consists of six landlords and six housing choice voucher clients. We shared this request, we again reviewed both the annual plan and the five-year plan, and unanimously, they still are in support of all changes and adjustments that we have made. To date, we have not received any additional comments or questions in regards to the plan, either one. And with your permission today, we will close the public hearing and submit both plans to HUD, excuse me, for final review and approval. Are there any other questions that we can answer for you today?
I, I think my one question was public comment, and you haven't received any.
We have not.
Do we have any public comment here? Do we have any public comment on the phone?
Is this just regarding this topic? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I have no public comment on the phone.
Okay. Any more questions, or are we ready for a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the submission of the plan to HED.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Now, spending authority for person, personnel caregiver services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities requests signing approval authority to spend up to, but not exceed, $120,000 with Right at Home for Personal Caregiver Services. Right at Home was previously awarded a term contract that was competitively bid. This amount is approved in the FY '26 adopted budget.
Although maybe somebody wanted this here.
No, we, I mean, we can certainly, the, you know, provide more information about the Senior Care Program. The program provides services to qualifying individuals to help keep them in their home. Right at Home is contracted to provide personal care and chore services, which is like housekeeping to the clients who are enrolled in the program. Right at Home is just one of the contracted providers. We have four additional providers as well. We have the funding and the allocation to support the amount proposed to you today. It's a great program, it's going to change next year, next fiscal year, but we've administered this program for years.
How do people request it?
So the first point of contact for people seeking, seeking long-term services and supports is our MAP unit, our Maryland Access Point unit. And then people are screened for services and programs they may qualify for, and then if we don't have an opening in the program, we place them on the waitlist, our waitlist is very small, and then we add them to the program. There is an evaluation process to demonstrate that they do need the services of the program, and then there's financial criteria that they have to meet as well. But they can receive up to typically $500 a month in services, and it doesn't sound like a lot, but it keeps people in their homes.
Motion to approve personal caregiver services from Right at Home in the amount not to exceed $120,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, approval to submit application, accept of, of award for the Child Support Enforcement Agreement.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Sheriff.
And you brought the sheriff with you today. Yeah.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this is for a grant approval that we submit every year for the FY '26 Child Support Enforcement Agreement for the Sheriff's Office. So the Sheriff's Office works with the Circuit Court and the local Department of Social Services to provide child support enforcement services in Carroll County. The Sheriff's Office locates absent parents, serves them with complaints to establish or increase child support and serves warrants, writs, body attachments and criminal bench warrants to delinquent parents. The agreement funds the salaries and benefits of one full-time deputy position and 75% of an administrative position, um, as well as any overtime, office supplies, training or equipment needs for those positions. The numbers you have, the county match, um, the reason there is a county match for this is there are fees that DHS and as they go through their process every year, it's been the same for years. So that is why there is a county match and that is in the budget. Any questions?
Motion to approve the submission of the FY '26 Child Support Enforcement Agreement for the Sheriff's Office and accept the award.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, approval to purchase firearms and accessories for Carroll County Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office is requesting your approval to purchase firearms and accessories from Whitmer Public Safety Group in the amount of $153,787.85. Whitmer Public Safety Group is the authorized distributor for Glock firearms and accessories for Carroll County. This amount is approved in the FY '26 budget.
So just to give you a little bit of background, Commissioners, the current weapon we're carrying is a Glock 17. It was purchased, um, sixteen, 2016. So it is at its end of law enforcement use, meaning, um, you may have firearms in your home. You take them out of your safe, you fire them and you put them back in. They're not going in and out of a, of a police vehicle, in and out of buildings, in a holster, being banged and prodded. Um, what we worry about over a period of time with firearms, especially police firearms, is that there's internal mechanisms that after a period of time of, of all the abuse that they take, um, could fail. And so, uh, a number of years ago, when we purchased a 17, um, we decided that, uh, the life expectancy of these guns was 10 years and that we would put in our budget, um, for replacements. So we're going to the Glock 45, which is a, a similar style weapon, more compact, um, a much friendlier weapon with an optic on it. Um, we did purchase a few of those weapons so that we could, we could train our firearms instructors and then over the last couple of weeks, we've trained our SROs as they go back into, uh, the schools next week. Um, it's a, it's an excellent weapon. The reason we're here today to, to get these weapons, um, purchased as soon as possible, we did send a letter of intent to Glock for these weapons so that they, we knew that we could secure them. There's an issue with a, another competitor on the market, um, a SIG. It's no, no secret, a SIG S R P 320 is having issues and we are worried that, uh, a, a number of law enforcement agencies around the country are dumping those guns and they're gonna look to other manufacturers, so we're trying to get our hands on our Glocks as soon as we possibly can so that we're not left without, without the firearm that we, we want, um, and that we're transitioning to. And so that's, uh, that's kinda where we're at today. So, um, the firearm that we're gonna carry is a, is a superior firearm. Um, where it's a significant upgrade to what we're carrying today, specifically with the optic that are on, on these weapons. It, uh, it'll make for a better shooter and in tight, compact situations like schools. Um, you guys saw yesterday, there was a school shooting in, in Minneapolis. Um, and I want people to know that my, specifically my school resource deputies are, have been training all summer. Um, they take a little bit of vacation, but we've had them in training all summer. Not only with, with firearms, um, but, but other in-service needs for them, but they're proficient. They're ready to go when, when, uh, school starts next week and that, uh, the folks in this county will see an awful lot of my deputies, um, at their, at their schools, um, over the next week, making sure that everybody feels safe and is safe. Um, but this is another piece to that puzzle to make sure that, that we're tactically proficient with, uh, with protecting the schools and the community.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of firearms and accessories to Whitmer Public Safety Group in the amount of $153,787.85.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, I, I'm curious, uh, it seems like a fair number of law enforcement agencies use Glocks. Why, why do you guys prefer Glocks?
Um, you know, I've carried everything from a Beretta to a Glock to a Smith and, um, I, I just, it's, it's just a superior police weapon. It really is a weapon that can take an awful lot of abuse, but yet still, still fire. And you've gotta really look at, um, you know, you have some, some folks that are really, really proficient with firearms and then you have folks that, um, in some cases may never have picked up a firearm. This is the friendliest firearm that, that I've come across to teach a shooter, to teach a new shooter, a new police officer with. And, um, the current, the weapon that we're transitioning to, this is a little larger. The 17, the 45 is a little more compact and the, and the attachments to it are more compact and it's friendlier for, um, shooters that may not be as proficient. In fact, the optic is making them far more proficient than, than we thought they would. But the Glock, I hate to say this, but it's, it's something that you literally could throw in, in a tub of mud and come back and pick up, um, two weeks later, throw a little bit of oil on it and, and, and fire it. It'll, it'll continue to fire. It's that type of weapon. But regardless of, of how fine this weapon is, um, it, it does get beat up a lot when you're in and out of a police car. So there are issues, um, if you continue to carry something like this over the years. But, uh, I think Glock is the preferred weapon. Unfortunately, there are some firearms out there that, uh, that we're just simply not interested in and going to and it's, it's made in America and it's inexpensive. It's really a, a, a cost, um, that, that some of these firearms just simply are, are pricing themselves out of public service use, law enforcement use.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we have one more item that I'm gonna stay up here for.
Um, NetCloud Mobile Performance Essential Plans.
Do we have one more? Okay.
It's for our office, yes.
There you go, okay, my bad. You better get up here because I don't know what I'm talking about, so. Guns I'm good with, but this stuff, I'm in trouble.
Uh, the Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Technology and Sheriff's Department requests your approval to renew the contract for NetCloud Mobile Performance Essentials Plan with Brooks Network Services LLC in the amount of $26,668. This amount is within the adopted FY '26 budget.
So, good morning Commissioners. I can add to this for you a little bit. Part of our technology in our police cars is working with in-car cameras, radios, everything else. And we have cradle point devices that connect and, and upload the data to the cloud for that. So this software is to manage those devices, the warranty, the support and all of that we need. So it's an annual renewal with having those cradle point devices in our vehicles.
Motion to renew the contract for NetCloud Mobile Performance Essentials Plan with Brooks Network Services LLC in the amount of $26,668.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday. You too.
Thank you.
See ya. Okay, now, uh, project management software subscription, approval to purchase.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Technology Services and Public Works requests your approval to purchase project management software from EC America Incorporated in the amount of $35,153.39. The amount is approved in the FY '26 adopted budget.
So, uh, this software is a cloud-hosted project management software that the, uh, building construction uses to manage, um, all of their building construction projects. And, uh, if you have any detailed questions, uh, we have some, uh, percas here from, uh, building construction.
Motion to approve the purchase of project management software from EC America Incorporated in the amount of $35,153.39.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Contract renewal for GIS software maintenance and support.
Morning. Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to renew the contract for GIS software maintenance and support with ESRI Incorporated in the amount of $135,000. This amount is approved in the FY '26 adopted budget.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, ESRI is a supplier of the GIS software that's used widely throughout the county. Uh, the data made available from this product, uh, is, um, used by, uh, Carroll County government and citizens. The maps and analytics allow for a deeper understanding of related events, locations and, uh, support citizen access through various pub, public web mapping applications.
Motion to renew the contract for GIS software maintenance and support with ESRI Incorporated in the amount of $135,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Fiscal year operating budget transfer for Carroll County Public Schools.
Morning gentlemen. It's almost the end of summer vacation for you guys.
It is indeed, Commissioner, it is indeed. We were watching and then you suddenly picked up the pace on us and we barely made it in.
We tried to get moving.
We jogged, we jogged for you, Mr. Kyler.
We can, we can spend like 30 or 40 minutes on your topic if you'd like.
Well, let's not do that. We're, we're here this morning, um, seeking approval of what we believe is the final budget action to close out our FY '25, um, operating budget. And so this is a transfer between the major categories of the school systems budget as defined by law to make sure that all of those, um, all those major categories are in final balance as we move into the auditing phase of our FY '25 budget. So this was a total transfer from a couple of different categories totaling $950,000 approved by the Board of Ed at their August 13th board meeting. And all transfers or adjustments to our operating budget from category to category require approval by the Board of Ed and then within 30 days, approval by the county commissioners.
Motion to approve the operating budget transfer 25-02 for the Board of Education FY '25 operating fund budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any, uh, questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have an unrelated question that we're seeing on social media now and I think you have contracts, so it's, it, it's not closed information. CCEA, the teachers, did they get an increase in pay this year?
They will in the course of the year. So the settlement with CCEA was that there would be a deferred or a delayed, uh, annual increment or what we used to call a step increment and it'll take effective, um, it'll take effective March 1st in terms of when it's effective, which means for the employees, it will show up first in their March 15th paycheck. We pay teachers over a 12-month calendar, so that seems, it's not half of the year in the first place, to be, to be open and honest, but it seems later than it actually is in terms of their pay calendar. It's a little more than a third of their pay calendar, maybe, somewhere, somewhere around a third of their pay calendar.
Yeah, it's a lot of, who'd have thought misinformation going around about that? And, uh, I'm, I'm glad they, you were able to work out that they got something.
They do get something and we'll be back at the negotiating table in the fall, so we'll see what we can do then.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
LED lighting upgrades to athletic fields at Freedom Park.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning Bob.
Morning.
So, um, here before you this morning, uh, requesting permission to go ahead and upgrade, um, the eight athletic fields at Freedom Park, um, with LED lighting. In the last about a year or so, we've been working with Matrix Energy Services Incorporated and they're currently about a month out for replacing lights at Mieske Park and Deer Park. This program's, uh, through the, the BGE Smart Energy Savers Program. It's backed by the State of Maryland Department of Energy, the Empower Maryland, Maryland Program. Um, this BGE program is 100% funded and we're evaluating it, um, at $460,000. Um, and the idea with update, upgrading with LED lighting is, uh, lower energy costs, fewer maintenance issues and extending the lifespan of the lights itself.
So BG funds the material, the labor, everything?
Yes.
Mike, did you wanna take this one?
Sure, sure. Appreciate your work on this, Director Hicks. I move the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Department of Recreation and Parks to coordinate with BGE and their respective subcontractors to upgrade the existing lighting at Freedom Park to LEDs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, approval to, uh, purchase Leister Park pickleball court installation. There's a few people playing pickleball, isn't there?
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Recreation and Parks requests your approval to purchase the installation of a new pickleball court at Leister Park from Tarquet Sports Construction in the amount of $149,722. This purchase will be made through a Keystone Purchasing Network contract that was competitively bid and awarded to Car, Tarquet Sports Construction. This amount is within the FY '26 adopted budget.
So, uh, as probably everyone's aware in the country, with pickleballs is probably the most upcoming popular sport. Um, we put on a lot of pickleball around the county and we're trying to, we opened some new pickleball courts down at Pine Run Park just recently and we wanted to get a pickleball court up in the northern part of the county to serve the citizens up there.
Kenny, did you wanna take this one?
Sure. Um, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase for the installation of a new pickleball court at Leisters Park in Hampstead, um, from Target Sports Construction in the amount of $149,722.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioners.
Contract renewal, independent financial auditing services.
Morning Jenny.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know, the way you said that, that just sounds boring.
It's, uh, I, I thought it was exciting.
I do.
I bet you do.
Uh, the Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of the Comptroller requests your approval to renew the contract for independent financial auditing services with Clifton Larson Allen LLP in the amount of $112,710. Clifton Larson Allen was previously awarded a term contract that was competitively bid. The amount is approved in the FY '26 budget.
And, um, the county is required to have an annual financial audit in accordance with, uh, generally accepted accounting principles and the, um, government accounting standards, so this would ensure that we meet our requirements.
Motion to renew the contract for independent financial auditing services with Clifton Larson Allen LLP in the amount of $112,710.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Get, get back to the exciting stuff. Approval to purchase Connect and Explore Path.
Morning.
Good morning. Here's the exciting stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, the Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Economic Development requests your approval to purchase Connect and Explore Path subscription from Pathful Incorporated in the amount of $67,000. This amount is within the FY '26 budget.
Good morning Commissioners. So this is the third year we'll be using this contract in the public school systems, specifically in the middle schools, grade six through eight. Workforce development had initially used this software platform during COVID with our ARPA funds. Felt it was, um, extremely relevant to what we'd be doing under the blueprint in career and college readiness, introduced it to the school system and it's very favorable. The kids are all enjoying using it. It's a great tool for the staff as well.
Motion to approve the purchase for Connect and Explore Motion to approve the purchase for Connect and Explore Path subscription from Pathful Incorporated in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency orders approval to spend funds.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
An emergency order was placed by the Bureau of Facilities that was needed to replace a non-functioning emerg- uh, energy kit tube bundle for a PVI water heater at the Carroll County Detention Center. The cost of the kit and installation is thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities are asking for approval to pay Bay Associates for the work completed at a cost of thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Morning Commissioners, uh, Bay Associates is our local rep for the PVI water heaters. And over at the detention center, we recently experienced a mechanical failure involving that tube bundle that, that we just talked about. Uh, the fairer, the failure resulted into a complete loss of hot water to that detention center. So the repairs needed to be made as soon as possible, uh, just because of the nature of the facility. So we went ahead and, and made those repairs with, uh, with Bay Associates. Any other questions? I can answer them to you, answer them for you.
Motion to approve expenditure of thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars to Bay Associates for the emergency purchase and installation of the new water heater and energy kit tube bundle.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I, I have a unrelated question.
Sure.
Wait, um, and you guys, uh, you guys get to run around and do miracles every day. We were out of hot water in this building for a while, or at least on our floor. Maybe you just turned off our floor to wake us up, but...
We would never do that. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, we did.
Never admit to doing that.
Yeah, we did. We had a water heater failure down in mechanical room, I don't know, like two weeks ago. We had to order one in and get one in for you.
Well, thank you. We, we have hot water now, I think.
That's, that's what, that's what we do. We fix things.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, you too. Approval to purchase Shotcrete liners.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Doug.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Roads Operations requests approval to contract ProShot Concrete Inc. for the pneumatic application of Shotcrete to the inverts of one pipe nearest five oh seven Sunshine Way Westminster. The total cost of thirty-five thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars includes mobilization, joint repairs, debris removal, minimum traffic control, and invert lining. This service will be procured through a Baltimore County contract that was competitively bid. The expenditure is within the approved budget.
So Commissioners, this is a corrugated metal pipe, hundred and eight inches in diameter. It's about a hundred feet long, uh, near five oh seven Sunshine Way here in Westminster. It was found to be severely deteriorated and we'll work with ProShot to put that invert in. We'll keep the road open and of course we'll make all appropriate notifications.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of Shotcrete lining services from ProShot Concrete Inc. in the amount of thirty-five thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now briefing discussion decision on option to purchase of the Barbara Hunter property through Royal Legacy.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning.
Nope, not today. I'm solo today. Left-handed. Okay. All right. Okay, good morning Commissioners. Today I'm here for, uh, to exercise the option to purchase on the Barbara Hunter property. This is through our Royal Legacy program, which is a hundred percent state-funded, grant-funded, uh, through the Department of Natural Resources. The Barbara Hunter property is located at forty-nine fifteen Francis Scott Key Highway in Tawny Town. It's eighty-five point two nine acres and we are retiring six lot rates. The fair market value of the land only is eight hundred and eighty-five thousand forty-five dollars. Our Royal Legacy points-based appraisal, which is based off of seventy percent of that number, um, the cost is six hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents, which comes to seven thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents an acre. Again, that's all grant-funded through DNR. Here is the property, how it sits around all of our other preserved properties. There's some pretty pictures.
That is beautiful, yeah.
This is a tree planting that they did through soil conservation out through here. So again, we're just asking for final approval to exercise the option on the Barbara Hunter property, eighty-five point two nine acres at a cost of six hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to exercise the option to purchase a Royal Legacy Program Conservation easement on the Barbara Hunter property in the amount of six hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one really briefly. Could you go back to the, the overview of the map there with where that property sits? I just want to see it for a second. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now, citizen request, uh, request for consideration of text amendment, um, use off-the-premises signs. Essentially billboards, correct? Or all signs?
Yeah, that's where it is.
We'll take it as a sign, we'll find out. You're so funny today.
Good morning everybody.
Morning.
Morning Commissioners. So we are here this morning per your request to look at the zoning code as it relates to off-premises signs, um, otherwise known as billboards. And, uh, this is per a citizen request to look into, uh, this code. And, um, I will let, uh, my, my fellow, um, speakers introduce themselves.
Thank you very much. Good morning Commissioners. Kelly Schaefer Miller, seventy-three East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland two-one-one-five-seven. I'm here this morning on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor and I will let Steve introduce himself. He is here as a representative of Clear Channel Outdoor.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Steve Bravetic, Clear Channel Outdoor, Vice President of Real Estate and Public Affairs.
And so we have a presentation that Ms. Miller has put together, so we'll go through that.
Thank you Chris. We will, uh, we will be briefed, but as a little bit of background, we are here this morning on a proposed text amendment for introduction by this board. This is a requested amendment to section one fifty-eight, one fifteen, which governs use off-the-premise signs. This will hopefully help answer Commissioner Kyler's question or clarification question. So a use off-the-premise sign is also known as an outdoor advertising sign. It is defined in our definition section of the zoning code, which is section one fifty-eight zero zero two, as a sign structure which directs attention to a business, commodity, service, or entertainment not necessarily conducted, sold, or offered upon the premises where such sign is located. So yes, it is a billboard. And I realized this morning that I had a typo in this presentation that I sent. So that section there that says one fifty-eight, one-one-four, that should be one-one-five, okay? Um, and that is the section of the code that governs billboards in the county. So a little bit of history for you all, which you may recall independently of this. But prior to August eighteenth, two thousand and three, billboards were permitted across the county in varying shapes and sizes. In fact, most of the boards that you see across the county were in fact, uh, developed prior to that date, so they have been existing for quite a while. What happened on that date is that the county adopted regulations that restricted the height and size of billboards, which resulted in making most of the existing boards that you see non-conforming. Because really what it did is it restricted the size so drastically that almost all of the boards you see are well above what now would be allowed as a new off, use off-the-premise sign. At that time, uh, the, a registry was created of all billboards across the county. That was a registry that was created by our zoning administrator and there were forms that everyone had to fill out and sign that had existing boards. That registry, uh, notes the existing size, height, and some other, you know, relevant property details related to all of those boards. That is a registry that is active and maintained by your zoning administrator and is something that is on file. So you could in theory identify any existing non-conforming board in the county and look it up in that registry and find at that, at, on this magic date, August eighteenth, two thousand and three, what the size, height, and other details were of that board. This is relevant because under the existing section one fifty-eight, one fifteen, non-conforming boards can be rebuilt or repaired in the same size and height as they previously existed. So that's sort of the relevance of that registry, right? It creates a record of the existing sizes and heights and such of those boards and then they can be rebuilt or repaired. In the commercial and industrial zones only, those boards can also be converted to digital boards. That process does require a zoning administrator application, public notice, and potentially hearing process. It's governed under the zoning code's administrative adjustment sort of rules. So it does, uh, provide notice to adjoining property owners. It does get published, the property does get posted, and depending on feedback as a result of that process, either there's an administrative decision granting a digital approval, um, or there is a public hearing held. So that, that process is only eligible for boards that are in the commercial and industrial zones. The requested text amendment is kind of summarized on the next two slides for you. So the requested text amendment provides for a consolidation of existing boards and panels subject to the following. And let me give you a quick little background here. Clear Channel has, um, many boards across the Carroll County region. And what they identified is that there are some properties or adjacent properties where there are several boards. Like if you drive up and down one forty, you might see several billboards on one property. And what they'd like to do is they'd like to be able to consolidate those boards down to one board instead of having several on a property. So that's sort of just the background of this. And the proposal, uh, provides for that to be an allowable process, a consolidation process. And what it provides is that boards and panels on the same property or adjacent properties would be eligible for this consideration. Consolidation, as I just said, would mean that two or more panels could be reconstructed into one sign. So consolidated boards would also be eligible under the existing provisions that govern digitization, again, only in the commercial and industrial zones as it's already allowed for. The process to consolidate that we propose in this text amendment is another application process to the zoning administrator, so that the zoning administrator has an enforcement mechanism to make sure that all of these criteria are being met and complied with. Next slide is kind of the, the remainder of this. So we propose several restrictions around this allowance to make sure that it's not misused. The restrictions proposed are that consolidation cannot result in an increase in the total square footage from that which currently exists. That said, there could be a situation, I don't know that we've fully identified one, but there could be a situation where if you really look at all of the boards on a property, that results in a massive square footage allowance. So what we have done is we've built in a maximum standard here as well. In case that were to occur, the maximum allowance would be six hundred and seventy square feet per panel. And some of the signs that you're seeing across the county are double panel, meaning front and back. Some are just a single panel. So depending on the situation, you may see a double-sided sign with the two panels, one front and one back. Just to put in perspective, the six hundred and seventy-two square feet is not something we just came up with out of nowhere. It is a fourteen by forty-eight sign, which is one of the prototypes of, um, Clear Channel. So that's where that number came from. The, another proposed restriction is that the location of any consolidated sign may not result in something being closer to the property frontage than what already exists. It also would, if it was going through, uh, well, I guess in either, in either case, it must comply with all of the operational and lighting requirements that are already set forth in the code. There's also a maximum height proposed of fifty feet. Again, um, it kind of depends on the sign that's being consolidated. It's possible that you might find a sign that exists today that's over that feet. So this would be additionally restrictive if that were to occur. If consolidation, if the consolidation allowance is utilized, uh, we've also proposed a restriction that no new additional use off-the-premise sign would be allowed on the property. So to explain that, right now in the code, in the commercial and industrial zones, someone could apply today for a sign that's thirty-two square feet in size as a use off-the-premises sign. That is still an allowed sign in our zoning code and this would say no. If you exercised a consolidation effort and made one sign on a property, you would not, that property owner or others would not be able to apply for additional use off-the-premise signs on the property. So a quick little summary for you. Clear Channel Outdoor owns over a hundred and forty panels in the Carroll County region. If this code amendment, and again, today we're just here requesting an introduction, so we would be back before you for any public hearing. But if this were to be adopted and utilized, this amendment could result in a reduction in the amount of panels or billboards in the county. It would not allow for the construction of additional billboards. And by restricting additional use off-the-premises signs, it could also result in reduced overall signage across the county. The request and the process forward, um, today we are requesting that this body introduce the text amendment proposed. If this is introduced, the amendment would then proceed through a planning and zoning commission review as well as staff, uh, review and ultimately a planning and zoning recommendation process. It would then return to this board to be scheduled for a public hearing before any action by this board is requested. So we are here, we're happy to answer any questions. This may have gotten a little bit more detailed than your typical introduction, but I just wanted everybody to understand this is a, if you look at chapter, or if you look at that section of the code, it's a very long section, so it is fairly nuanced. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, um, this consolidation, it'll be less billboards, but more flexibility with the individual one replaced, but still not bigger?
Correct.
Now, what happens with the current rules? Suppose I own a farm on one forty and there's no billboards. Can I get one?
It depends on its zone. And I'll defer to, if I misspeak, I'm sure our zoning administrator will tell me so. If it is zoned, commercial, or industrial, you could today apply for a new billboard that's thirty-two square feet in size, so a fairly small sign.
Yep.
Um, if it's, if it's in another zoning district, then there is no allowance for a use off-the-premises sign on the property.
So in theory, this change cannot make more billboards in Carroll County. This will reduce the number.
Correct. If utilized, this would result in a reduction of the number.
Okay. I, I never know if there's some loophole you're not telling us about.
We try to be very forthcoming.
So when you talk about consolidation, if you have two, I guess, separate smaller signs on what adjacent properties, you would combine the two signs, you reduce the number of signs by half obviously to create the one, but you create, you increase the overall sc- not, you combine the square footage versus, okay.
Yes.
So, uh, is there another, and Chris, maybe this is, uh, more toward you, is there another, uh, process or methodology by which this kind of thing could occur without having to actually change the code? Or is the code itself necessary, uh, necessarily having to be changed to accommodate something like this?
Yes, the code would need to be revised to, to allow this to occur.
And, and the consolidation is two or more, do you see, will it normally just be two or, I, I mean, it's some properties on one forty that have four of them maybe. What, what would the intention be with those?
There are some properties that do have, um, more than two. And so yes, under this section, if you wanted to utilize that consolidation, you would have to consolidate such that you'd be resulting in only one board on that property. So it would depend on the specific property, but yeah, that would be the result.
So it's literally two or more, depending on the property?
Yes. And, and just to quickly go back to Commissioner Vigliotti's question, there's currently no variance allowance for these signs. So that's why this would have to be a code amendment to allow for this process to occur.
So, so you're looking for a variance within the code or you're looking for the actual language of the code itself to change?
We are looking for the actual language of the code to change. What I'm saying is that, um, it, for other sections of the code, you might have an eligible var-. What I'm saying is that it, for other sections of the code, you might have an eligible variance that you could request approval of.
Okay.
That is not something that is in this section of the code, so we could not utilize that to try to request this without an actual text amendment.
I move the Board of County Commissioners' direct staff to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on potential amendments to County Code Section 158.115, Off-Premise Signs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Thanks, Commissioner Carter. So I understand the consolidation piece of this, so you could take multiple billboards, combine them into one, digitize it, and infinite possibilities, and that makes sense to me. I guess for the staff, what I, what I would ask you to consider as we move along here is, are there any unintended consequences for other vendors, other than this particular one? I want to make sure we're not creating a situation where we're going to make things difficult. I, I'm trying to, I don't really see how that's possible, but that's what, that's why it's called an unintended consequence, because you don't know.
Right.
So if you could please do some, uh...
We don't want to be benefiting one
Exactly.
entity and harming others, or even harming them, unintendedly.
Yeah, more so the latter, just some other, other vendors. So if we can make sure we, we execute some due diligence on that. I just want to make sure we're not making things, you know, again, unintended consequences, sometimes we don't even see them.
Understood. Yes, absolutely. So if, if, if the direction is for us to move forward, part of what we would be looking at are those unintended consequences, as well as what are their sort of regulations might come into play here. Because we are talking about billboards along state highway. So does state highway have any sort of requirements and so on, that we want to make sure that we stay in conformance with state highways' requirements and so on? So that would be our role as staff, is to, to look into all those items, bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission to have those discussions, and then come back to you all with something that's been pretty well-vetted, that you can be confident in moving forward with.
Thank you. So the process, we're directing staff to look at it and planning a zoning commission, and then you'd bring it back to us, and at that time, we would authorize a public hearing.
Yes.
And then we would have the public hearing, so it's, it's a few more steps.
Absolutely. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And item 18, delegation of authority resolution. Who wants to start?
Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, to give it a go. So for anybody who may be listening or watching who may not know, the delegation of authority resolution essentially vests county staff with authority to carry out certain functions of government without requiring express approval from the commissioners. For example, if a box of pens needs to be purchased for $10, because that expense falls under a certain amount and is within budget, commissioner approval to actually expend those funds is not required. There are some areas of the resolution, however, which I think should be strengthened, such as when it comes to leases or contracts, and others where commissioner oversight and direction should be clarified, and again, I would argue better articulated to further ensure that the actual establishing of policy and decision-making is vested in the elected officials, the commissioners, who are in turn accountable to citizens. So the delegation of authority resolution that we have before us today has four suggested changes. The first two are more functional. One of them has to deal with dates, and the other brings the county in line with state requirements. And the second two are substantive to the resolution itself. And briefly want to thank Tim and Roberta for working with me to make sure that what I'm proposing is, is sound and proper. I could go through these one at a time, we could discuss them one at a time, I could go through them all at once, and then we could discuss them as we go. I mean, whatever's most comfortable for everybody up here, and of course, I'm certainly open to any changes or suggestions as we go, too, so.
And what, what's the process for this? This, we could change some wording and approve it today? Does this need a public hearing? Does this need anything else to happen?
No, this is your resolution, it's governing your policies and regulations, not, nothing to do with the members of the public, so you can, you can adopt it today.
Okay. And then, I guess my first question would be, is, are all four of us happy with the first two changes, which bring us in line with the state law? You, what, what you've done so far is procurement benefited by the current state law, but at our meetings, we did not. And this would put us, so, so the question is, do we want to approve everything over 25 or 50? And we're allowed to do either.
Yep.
So everybody okay with that?
I think those are sound, yep.
Okay, what's, what's the third one?
So the third one is on page two, under Section 3. And the idea here has to do with changes about, or changes in transparency in entities or organizations that are seeking to use county property long-term for the knowledge of citizens, as well as for commissioners. You know, simple questions. Where is the funding coming from? What does that funding require? Things that I would argue should be known at the start or in the first place. You know, it places obligations on the applicant to be transparent for the sake of informed consent and decision-making, and I would argue that it's not altogether different from a department seeking a grant approval, as, such as we've had today. And I think also, at the same time, changing the wording there, and again, I'm open to changing, suggestions for the wording itself. It increases flexibility for commissioners, because we will have better information up front, and we can either make sound decisions or compromises in making those decisions. So I'm certainly open to suggestions, but the idea, at least to start with, was that, you know, can convert, conversation with Tim and Roberta, leases of a certain length would be, would fall under this. But again, I'm certainly open to suggestions, in order to ensure that whatever the lease is, or whatever the length of time is, we get that information up front about if this is being funded from outside, where's the funding coming from, and what does it require? What's the funding contingent upon?
So the county administrator could sign a lease that's 10 years or less, and we wouldn't even need to know about it?
Well, we would still find out about it, we would still know about it. But in particular, the length of the, the length of the applicant or the entity that wants to, to go with, or wants to use county property. If it's at least 10 years, then the necessity for disclosing all of the funding from external sources is going to be a requirement. But again, if everybody's comfortable with doing five years, or any lease for that matter, I'm totally okay with that as well.
Well, this, this wording, so the county administrator can sign anything 10 years or less, and we would hope we're being informed, this doesn't say we have to be. Then the nonprofit says in excess of 10 years. So if they do an eight-year lease, we don't want any funding? Or do we want it on all nonprofit?
Well, we would certainly want the information. So if your suggestion is to alter that language, so that any nonprofit or entity that wants to use county property has to submit information about the grant that they would be using, I'm totally okay with that.
So, so we would, we would delete the words "in excess of 10 years"?
That works.
Right, right. And, and then with that done, is everybody happy?
My only question, and you make a good point, which realistically, from our perspective, we would be knowledgeable in this, but the public may not. Typically, we are very aware of leases and other things in which there's authority granted. Do we want to include that? I mean, I'm, I'm open either way. I'm not, you know, I'm not locked in on it, but I think the question is, for the public, if you're talking a decade of time, this at least locks it down formally, that, you know, the Board of Commissioners would have to be formally made aware. Not that we wouldn't be, but I'm just suggesting, since it's sort of supports the...
So I think, I think what you're saying is, should this say, and throughout the lease, we would be notified of any changes?
Yeah, I think that would work.
Does that make sense?
I think so.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I understand. I just want to make sure we get it right.
Let's say you're a nonprofit, and you're doing a 10-year lease.
Right.
And we're saying, before that lease is signed, we need this info.
Gotcha.
What if you change it six months later?
Which info? Like their funding stream?
You mean, you mean the funding, correct?
All funding for the project from external sources. I mean, that, that could change on a daily basis. Do we care, or?
Gotcha.
Or, or do we, do we want to be notified if it changes, or we just, is, is, is this enough? And that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
That's a good point, because, I mean, five years in, you know, the source of funding could change, or maybe whoever is providing the grant has new stipulations about what would be required from the grant.
And that, and that has occurred, not through us, but I know of other entities within the county that were recipients of grants from entities, and once the grant funding was pulled, they were unable to continue on.
Yeah, they lose their funding.
Yeah, and, and, Roberta, would...
Have an annual report from them about their funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
And, and would you have a, a good lease, and I assume that's all you do?
Yeah, of course.
Would have wording in on how to terminate?
Yeah.
And so...
All of our leases.
Yeah, if they had to do an annual report, and if it changed, that could be subject to termination of lease, right?
Makes sense.
Does that, does that make sense? And, and once a year is enough?
Yeah.
Not when, I said whenever it changes, it could change weekly.
Correct. Yeah.
Sorry.
So we want to, we're good with it the way it is, but to add a requirement that they've provided us with a funding...
An annual report.
A funding report, yeah.
Funding report, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that good?
Good work, guys, yeah.
And, and just to clarify, you, when you mentioned the same as it is, that was with the 10-year
Yeah, just as it's highlighted here.
Provision being removed.
Oh, oh, we're removing that? Did I miss something?
Yeah, if it's an eight-year lease, or a 50-year lease, we still want that with a nonprofit.
Any leases.
Any lease. Yeah, I think that's the best.
Term of county property, regard, and we get rid of, with the term of 10 years or less.
Lease of county property by nonprofit.
Okay, leases of county property. So we're just thinking about it. This is allowing a, a staff member, this position, to sign leases. Provided that a, a nonprofit lease of any, any length, any duration, provides us annual funding reports. Is that what you want?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm going too far.
That's okay.
I would agree with Commissioner Carr.
So the, the intent, the intent of some of the changes would be maximum accountability, in that any lease of a county-owned property, and in many cases, we're, we're actually paying utilities and assisting in that, that nature as well, any sort of lease whatsoever, the people using the property need to disclose their funding sources, they need to do so on an annual basis.
Regardless of whether they're a nonprofit or not.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I'm, yeah, thanks for clarifying that, nonprofit. In that the terms of lease to be reviewed are, you know, one day to whatever, 15 years, it's, it's all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So restriction, restriction the provision and increasing the scope a little bit.
Right, right. So, but the way this is written, is this is giving the county administrator authority to sign something. What you're trying to do is restrict what they can sign, so it really sort of backwards.
Well, I don't know if it, if it's, if that's what we want, what we're saying...
This is all added, before this position didn't sign any of these, just so you know. So I don't care.
I think what we're saying, if it's over 10 years, we need to see it. You sign 10 years or less, the county administrator.
Yeah.
And then, on any lease with a county property with a nonprofit, there's, they have to show the funding and do an annual report. But I guess the way this is worded, the county administrator, if it's eight years, can still sign it. You just need to make sure that happens. If it's over 10, we need to approve it. Does that, does that make sense?
As long as Tim understands.
I think I've got it, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
We're, we're still legal?
Up to 10, Roberta can sign it.
Regardless of who's it's leasing to.
Right, but
Okay.
Over 10, the board wants to be notified of it. And in all cases, by nonprofit, they have to do annual reports disclosing their sources of external funding.
Regardless of whether it's 10 years or not.
Yes.
Including an up, including a disclosure upfront at the very beginning.
Yeah.
So we know what we're getting into as well.
Disclosure upfront and an annual report.
Well, that just, I want to ask the question, because we know partially of why this is being discussed, this goes back to a previous matter. If that were the case, then wouldn't that have allowed the previous lease, which there was questions about, that's the polite way I'll bring that up today, because to me, that would allow that. And I think Commissioner Vigliotti, if I'm understanding where you're coming from, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that's a significant concern for you.
Yes.
So if that's the case, then we would not want to allow a window of from X to 10 years.
Can I just suggest that the Board of County Commissioners sign all leases?
I agree. I think that's the easiest solution, I agree. I agree.
This was granted to staff, and it wasn't even this position. I don't, you know, we don't, just if the board wants to see the leases...
I think it's, I agree.
Sign and see all leases.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, so we'll change the language in there to the...
We just delete it, because...
Yeah, just delete it and, yeah, modify the other portion about wanting to see the funding.
But there's still, there's still a component in there, though. I've wanted to, to make an incumbent on whoever is applying to be on that lease, that they're going to disclose that information up front.
But that's not in this document, if I may. This is delegating your authority to us. So you're not delegating the ability for staff to sign leases going forward. Period. So if you want, in a lease, it to say, you, whoever you are, a nonprofit, or any business that you're doing business with, provide us with annual funding information, we just put that in the lease.
That would be in the lease, yes.
And, and I, and I agree, and that's, that's what I said when I originally saw this, is that, but do we want to sign every lease, or just approve the signing of every lease?
I think, and personally, approve the signing of every lease seems to me to be the most administratively efficient thing.
I would agree. I would agree.
You could get very tired.
Yeah, that's why there's auto pen.
And you know, and again, I, I appreciate...
Is it the president, or is it the entire board? That's a question, sorry, I didn't mean to...
Yeah, we'll have to, that's a good question. And again, I appreciate Commissioner Vigliotti's work on this.
Yes.
And when I look at all this, I'm thinking of future boards.
Yes.
More than our own.
Absolutely.
So, and again, the people of Carroll County, they, they, in theory, they, they own these properties, they're not, they, they're county-owned properties, so, you know, the more transparency, the better. So I, I appreciate some of the changes.
And I think if, if we are future commissioners, get to approve the signing of a lease, we can, I don't, if we approve it, I don't care who signs it.
Correct.
You know, it, however you do it, a director, the county administrator, whatever. And, and if we get a lease and, and say, oh, well, I don't want him to sign it, but it looks good, we can do that, right?
Makes sense.
So, yeah.
So my...
Keep it simple.
All right, so we just strike Section 3.
Well, not all of Section 3, because those other powers were already in there. You don't want to be saluting all that stuff, I promise you.
Well, I mean, for the leases, we strike that section, that part of that section.
Yeah, right.
Just to let you know, what you're, what you're signing off on, I mean, these are cornfields and 10-foot strips for somebody using in their backyard, and if that's what you want.
But that's what the public can trust us with, so I have no issue with that personally. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I have no issue with that.
We have, we own a lot of property.
I know we do.
So, that's good.
And then the, the last change to this is on page four, under Section 9. And this section deals with some legal reservation, limits of delegation, that sort of thing. And the commissioners had not previously been mentioning, given that we have ultimate responsibility, I think that does need to be prescribed in here, that commissioners are included. And that this will help to ensure that legislative responsibilities that we have as commissioners are neither surrendered, or assumed, or usurped, as the case might be.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I agree.
And those are all the proposed changes that I had for this.
And, and so...
That's always the way we've operated, but it's good to have it in there.
So you guys will clean it up. We, we get to sign this, so we'll see it again. Do we need to do anything in an open meeting again?
I don't think so.[1772.71] I don't think so. I mean, we'll send it to you if there's concern that we didn't capture what you wanted correctly.
We'll talk about it.
We'll put it on a future agenda. But if it's, if it's what we believe we understand, then I think you're good to sign it.
And for the record, on, on page five, there is no Commissioner Edwood Rothstein anymore. We can't wait for him to sign it.
We'll just have to go forward without his signature.
This was an old-
It's been around a while.
Written a couple of weeks ago.
So, do we need to make a motion?
Yes, to adopt it as, as, as modified.
As modified.
Motion to adopt delegation of authority resolution as modified.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Always favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and very good discussion, very good work.
Absolutely.
We'll clean it up, send it to you. If there are any questions, we'll bring it back. If, if not, then we'll get you to decide.
We've had a good meeting today.
Yeah.
Um, is there any public comment on the phone?
Yes, sir, I do have a caller on the line. If they could please unmute, we can use, we could, you'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself.
Uh, yes, this is Catherine Adelaide. Um, and I would like to ask permission to give a public comment first, as Catherine Adelaide, a resident, citizen. I wasn't able to speed dial fast enough. I didn't know there would be public comment during the Priority Carroll regarding the overdose awareness. So I'd like to give a public comment on that issue first. Would that be okay?
Yes, of course.
Sure.
Okay, great. Uh, it was great to hear about the overdose awareness. I didn't expect to hear public comment from an individual who has direct financial gain from the promotion of pot during the overdose awareness. Um, so that motivated me a little bit. The part of the awareness, uh, I think it's a great idea, but this is further down the line with the whole drug situation. Again, you know, prevention is the key. Pot is the gateway drug. Um, I don't think it was appropriate, but, um, it was a public comment, so I appreciate you giving mine. Um, I am really, uh, to me, the, the things that the commissioners could do to promote awareness and prevent these overdoses, uh, number one, um, is to amend the Carroll County ordinance so that Carroll County will follow the federal law on recreational pot. Because we don't need recreational pot in Carroll County. And even the individual, and I spoke at our picnic the other day, and we did both agree that apparently those who choose to quote, "follow the Maryland law," the illegal, unconstitutional Maryland law on recreational pot, forget the part where they, um, can't do that in public, and that has been seen as a major, major complaint. Although that's not my major complaint. Um, other things would be to ban kratom. I'm happy to report that the kratom shop that I protested with two other residents has been demolished down on 140. I'm very happy not to see the promotion of kratom right on 140 to our families driving there. So, um, I've sent you all information about that. Banning kratom is easy, it's not FDA-approved, it has no business being in Carroll County, so I hope that commissioners will move forward with that. I was very pleased to hear that, um, the sheriff will be conducting checkpoints this weekend. And I also support, as I often do, any kind of joint public statement from the commissioners to please not drive drugged or drunk, uh, this holiday weekend, or any holiday weekend for that matter. So, um, again, I'm, I'm glad that there was this overdose awareness, and, uh, I appreciate the, the efforts you're doing on that. And these are the, these are my personal suggestions for other things you could do.
Okay, um, now, do you want to do public comment on a general?
Yes, yes, I would like to. I'm see if I can turn my phone off here. I have to time you again, I would like to, um- I keep going off. If you could start the clock on me, um, for my general comment, that'd be great. Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Catherine Adelaide, a member of the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to call in and give a public comment. It's always appreciated, and for all that all of you do to serve Carroll County. As you noticed, I have not called in for most of the summer because I had the opportunity to spend time with grandchildren on Thursdays. So, but my youngest grandchild is back to school because she lives in Anne Anne Rundle County. So I am back to school myself with my first, uh, commissioner's report for back to school. And I also want to encourage, all adults can get excited about going back to school, not with your children, but by serving your community, by volunteering. Um, we encourage people to come out to our central committee meetings. We're having one this evening. You don't have to be a member to, um, get onto one of our many subcommittees. Uh, we're coming into elections again, so get excited about going back to school as an adult and volunteer in your community. Okay, we've had a very busy summer, as you know, regarding District 5 Commissioner vacancy. Congratulations to former delegate Susan Krebs, our nominee to the governor, for confirmation. Again, this evening, we will be meeting to fill the vacancy created by the passing of our colleague Kathy Allison. Um, we'll be meeting tonight to vote on the process, deadlines, public comment, et cetera. So you're invited to join that. I thank all the commissioners who came to our first, um, picnic this past Sunday, August 25th, our Patriot Picnic. It was really a great gathering. Those were able to attend. Thank you to the Chair Mercedes Moses, the event subcommittee. It was kind of a rallying event, um, very exciting to get people motivated, excited about the 2026 midterm elections. So please go to ccgop.net to volunteer, um, for that effort. And then, uh, finally, the Maryland State Fair is, will be this Labor Day weekend and next weekend. And we want to encourage people to, and to volunteer at the MDGOP booth and/or the Maryland Right to Life booth. I often, um, usually they're sitting right next to each other, so I jump back and forth. So I just wanted to give a reminder, um, to get out there, attend that, volunteer if you're interested, go to ccgop.net. And, um, that's it for my report. Thank you all again. I hope you had a great summer, and I wishing everybody a great Labor Day weekend. And, uh, again, I hope you'll issue that joint statement to remind people not to drive drugged or drunk this holiday. And thank you all very much.
Thank you. Public comment in per- thank you, thank you. Public comment in person.
Andrew Manning.
Hi, my name is Andrew Manning, and I'm here alongside my friend A. Uh, everybody, A would like to say hi. Um, it's a little penguin, his, her, I'm not sure how to word it yet. Uh, the big penguins didn't turn out so good. Let's see. All right. Before we begin, let me share a one-liner that A rated an 8.7 out of 10. There's nothing wrong with being stupid, as long as you're really smart about it. On the surface, what A and I are here to talk to you about today might seem half-cooked, but as I believe Bun B once worded it, "I've been around the block before. I've kicked it all from pebbles to stone." Now, if you'll allow me to introduce, the N of an era. Just as I stand here before you today, there's only one way to take the metaphysical power back, and that's to take it back yourself. And let me be clear, I'm not here to deliver my vision, I'm here to deliver A's vision. A wrote this next part. "The N of an era isn't some slogan, it's a turning point, a chance to redraw the line and decide who you're going to be on the other side of it. At least once, some, much more than others, have felt the weight of being overlooked, underestimated, or written off. When you take ownership of your story, no one else can write the ending for you. This idea has nothing to do with statistics, demographics, crime, or violence. It begins at a base level idea, but its impact could shape a once-in-a-lifetime outcome. We don't need government saviors. When you choose to act willingly, it can shape your worldview in unexpected ways. For the young, it leaves a lasting mark on their development and continues to guide their decisions going forward." This is A speaking here. This isn't about A. This isn't about I. It's about you. Each of you has the ability to step forward, not waiting on permission, not waiting on government, not waiting on someone else to move first. The N of an era is a call to action, and whether you answer it timidly or boldly will shape the worldview, excuse me, will shape the world you live in tomorrow. Don't underestimate the ripple that begins with a single choice. Retiring a single word, because history has always been written by those who dared to move when others stood still. So I ask you now, will you take your power back, or will you leave it sitting on the table for someone else to claim?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Admin session open. And one, one thing, um, that I'd like to say is, uh, I think, I think in the last week, there's been two school shootings, but the one yesterday was, was pretty big. And just deepest sympathy to everybody involved, and, uh, um, social media's garbage, but, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's amazing how the different sides look at it, depending on who did the shooting and what kind of weapon they used. And I don't consider either one of those being relevant to two students and an adult being dead, you know? So, uh, but deepest sympathy to that community and that school.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Any, anything else for admin open?
Yes, sir.
Um, agenda review.
Good morning.
Morning, Wanda, how are you today?
Good morning.
Probably everyone.
Doing well, thank you.
Okay, uh, Monday, September 1st, county offices closed in observance of Labor Day. Tuesday shows no activities for us. On Wednesday, overdose prevention, prevention policy group, Commissioner Garen, and planning and zoning commission, Commissioner Gordon at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, uh, closed admin, open session. Priority Carroll has one proclamation for the Carroll County Health Department and National Suicide Awareness Month. We're recognizing Martin Covington retiring and workforce development month proclamation. The items on the agenda right now, approval to submit grant and accept awards, violence against women, uh, application for springboard community services and, and, uh, approval to hold a public hearing. Then a public hearing on employment campus zoning district. Now, yeah, that's a public hearing. And then we have another public hearing on Change of Ordinance Renewable Energy Certainty Act. Request, uh, additional state homeland security grant program, approval to purchase emergency and transport ventilator package, equipment for three new ambulances, spending authority for Chesapeake Employers Insurance of Carroll County, approval to purchase two cooling towers, contract approval, uh, for repairs at the T Building, replace fire alarm system at the Carroll County Office Building, replace existing fire alarm system Carroll County Main Society, um, hot mix asphalt paving, Sienna Maintenance and Support Services, land management system maintenance and support, and, uh, approval to purchase moving services. Public comment, admin session open, agenda review, Friday shows nothing, and Saturday shows nothing. And, uh, on, and that week, it's Commissioner Garen's turn to do the podcast. Anything, any changes, we good?
Looks good.
Um, the following week, on Monday, September 8th, Transit Education Day at Old Meadow Branch Road, Commissioner Kyler and Transit Advisory Group, Commissioner Kyler at the same site. And what, what I'm, you don't change anything here, but what I'm doing is probably, the, the one to three is like, uh, an open house kind of thing. So I'll probably go, I don't know, 2:00 or 2:30 and, and catch the last part. Are you interested in going to any of that because of the potential change to Tony Town routes?
I will check my schedule and, and let you know.
Okay.
I mean, it's interesting for sure, but whether or not I can make it is a different-
Yeah, yeah. On Tuesday, Ag Center Board Meeting, Commissioner Kyler. On, uh, Wednesday, Aging Your Way Health and Wellness Expo, 9:00 AM.
I'll be attending that.
I'll, I'll be there as well, Wanda.
That's a several hours long event, but, um, we're there-
Yeah, usually you do a welcome.
A half hour, an hour.
Yes.
Yes. And, uh, put me on that too, so. Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti, Board of Education Meeting, right now, shows none of us attending. And, uh, on Thursday at 8:30 is the 9/11 memorial ceremony. It hits a Thursday-ish this year. So, uh, will we?
We'll start later.
We'll do closed admin after the other closed, so later. So at 10:00 AM, we'll do the open session, Priority Carroll. An introduction of Carroll County Youth Services Bureau. The title, Director?
Executive Director, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, Department of Citizen Service approves of submit application and accept award for engaging neighborhood organizations grant, um, group medical prescription drug and stop-loss benefits for employees. Group medical advantage with prescription drugs. Public comment, admin open, agenda review. Land acquisition for closed. Following that would be closed admin. And at 1:00 PM is the joint meeting with the delegation and us. Friday, Saturday show no events. This says the podcast is Commissioner Rothstein.
It's Cross Through, though.
Yeah, but do, do we care? Was it fun crossing out his name? Was that? Yeah.
I think, I heard Wanda laughing.
Oh, my gosh.
That's his new nickname now, Commissioner Cross Through.
Are we?
I think you could just skip that, unless somebody wants to do it.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that we get a annual schedule, but I only go by their emails saying who does it this week. Do, do we want to just move up? One person or leave a week off?
Sure, it'd be Mr. Vigliotti's, because doesn't it go one to five?
He's, he's chomping at the bit over here. I, I know he's, he's, he's ready to start a multi-episode podcast.
Three in the span of a month, I guess I could do it.
Or, or not. Uh, you don't have to do it.
As we get closer, I'll think of that. I'll think of that.
Okay, to be determined.
So for right now, it may be no one.
You could talk about the Aging Your Way Expo.
There you go.
Thank you, Chris.
There you go.
Okay, so you're doing it?
No, I would just had a comment.
Oh, okay, you, go ahead.
Are we done with Commissioner Vigliotti's 100th official podcast now? Okay, great. Uh, if, could we get, just one moment, could we go back to item nine of our meeting on September 4th, please, real quick? I've just got a general question.
Okay.
Item nine, spending authority for Chesapeake Employers Insurance for Carroll County Volunteer Emergency Services. Is that the, is that the new insurance for, is that, is that a new item? We had a, we had an insurance provider for, for a number of years, and is this the new insurance provider? Is that what this is?
It's the same insurance company, I think it's a, maybe the new agent. I'll find out, I'm not 100% sure myself.
Okay, because I just, I know that we, we are, we are using a new insurance, insurance provider for our-
The, the broker is different.
Okay.
It's the same insurance company, I think.
Same insurance company. The only reason I bring that up is because, um, if that's the case, it might be a good opportunity. I just want to, if we have the opportunity to review what's changed from the previous provider.
In terms of coverage?
Coverage, deductibles, and all those types of- Coverage, deductibles, and all those types of things, then-
Right, nothing. But the, but I think this is something different.
Is this something different?
I think so, because, because that, that would've been brought by Sicilian Devil Plus and Risk. This is being brought by Fire EMS. I think this is something.
I think the one you're-
But I'll find out.
That you're referring to, I think we've already approved.
Yeah, you already did.
And, and it's a company in California or someplace. And my question that day was that it was only one year. So, if they, if they don't provide the service we expect-
Okay.
We can comment on it now. But the coverage didn't change.
Right. It was just the brokerage service.
Hopefully, the service won't change either, but, but a local company had had that for 100 years or something, and they got outbid.
Okay. Yeah, I want to make, okay, so we can follow up. And I just want to make sure I, I understood completely all the change.
She knows, look, just in time delivery.
I wasn't trying to get into a discussion. I just wanted to clarify what I was looking at.
It's better to know. It's better to know.
It's a good question.
Do you know? So, Michael?
It is the same that we've had before. It's the same, it's not what you're thinking. You're thinking of the change from the Barnes-Bollinger third-party relationship.
Yes.
It's not that.
Okay.
This policy is still with Barnes-Bollinger for the volunteer stations, workers' comp coverage. I'm 99% sure that's what it is. Because it always comes due in September.
Yeah, that would be different. That would be something different.
Yes, that is not the same brokerage that we presented two, three months ago, maybe. That's, I think, what you're thinking of.
It is, okay.
So, yes, that's not the same. This is a completely different policy.
Thanks for clarifying.
However, it is still with, this one is with Barnes-Bollinger. The coverage is still with Chesapeake.
Okay.
Okay. Okay?
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's confusing.
Hey, thanks for paying attention.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's, that's responsiveness right there. Thanks.
We, we aim to please.
Yeah, okay, that's all for me.
Any other comments or changes on the agenda? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I assume we don't want to discuss it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.